So I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Are we live? Okay. Start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I get a motion on the minutes?
Second.
Okay. I have one revision. On page twenty-three. Chair asked for a motion to approve. It should be chair made, a motion to approve. Anybody else? Jamie?
Uh, I'm Jamie Fitzpatrick. I'm at home and I'm alone.
What you said was very wise and very important, but you didn't come across, Jamie.
Oh, it didn't come through? Yeah, okay, so I just was pointing out that I'm, I am remote, so I'm Jamie Fitzpatrick. I'm at home in my office.
Yeah, um. So Jamie Fitzpatrick, we didn't hear the rest of it, Jamie.
And I'm alone. I'm at home alone.
Okay, and I have to read the right to know. Larry, do you want to announce?
My name's Larry Heath. I'm at home in my office and I am alone.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't have to read the right to know. The manifest is here. So the next thing is communications.
The vote on the minutes. We have to vote on the minutes. We didn't vote.
So we got a move, we got a second, we got a motion, all in favor, starting with Larry of the minutes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself is yes. And the manifest is going around. Tom, do you have any nominations?
Nope, just resignations, sorry. We have two resignations, one from the Baky School, Candace Keenan, teacher grade three, and Memorial School, Renee Phelan, ELA interventionist.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept the resignations?
Remoted.
We'll call vote. Larry, are you in favor of the resignations?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes for me. Any reports?
Very good.
Oh, superintendent report, sorry.
Um, most of my superintendent's report is actually going to be covered this evening under the update on the district reopening plan in seven point four. Most of our work the last couple of weeks have been about COVID-19. Will being open for in-person instruction, so I'm just gonna defer until that item on the agenda because that's really the primary.
No policy met on the six. John, do you have a report for that?
Um, I reported out at our last meeting with a quick little synopsis.
Okay, great. And ISA met, what, today?
We met, yes, earlier this evening, so I'll report on that at our next meeting.
Uh, facilities met today. And we reviewed the trust and revolving fund balances. Um, the special ed fund is two hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. That's the, these are balances as of December thirty-first. The capital improvement fund is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. The unanticipated educational fund is a hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and five cents. And the facilities use fund is a hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and four dollars and forty-eight cents. The total of those funds is eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents. We discussed some areas at the high school for insertion in the capital improvement plan. Which involve equipment in the auditorium. Also, a proposal for a greenhouse. And we also discussed LED lights and solar analysis that would be done involving all the facilities. And that was pretty much it. Oh, and also some priorities. There, there's a heating boiler at the Baky that needs attention. And the auditorium was second, along with mics. Consoles for light and sound, and the screen up on the auditorium itself. That was pretty it for today. Jamie, you gave a report. Do you have anything else?
No, I gave the update the last time. I've just gotta type up a formal one and I'll have that done prior to the meeting. First meeting in February.
Personnel met today.
Nope, we did not meet.
Oh, you didn't meet, okay. Jamie, you have anything on the budget on the public hearing?
Public relations, I don't know.
I don't think they met.
We did meet.
Yes, we did.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Public relations, okay. Public relations met on January thirteenth. The total committee was present. We reviewed the previous minutes, they were approved. And we discussed review of the annual reports. The COVID-19 letter and the superintendent's letter. Uh, both of them were approved by my committee and by all of us. And the superintendent will expand on that as necessary. And our next meeting is, I hope, uh, February tenth. That's also another meeting for us, so I don't know. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the budget committee's public hearing was last Thursday. There weren't any changes made to any warrant articles. There were some. And then there were a couple of people from, there were four people in attendance in the audience, two of them were board members. There was not, there's, I don't really have anything to report unless anyone has any questions.
SST?
The SST did meet last Monday. And we talked about a variety of topics, including enrollments, programming. The SST is looking at having a military option, an ROTC type option. And so they were exploring that and discussing, do, they wanna avoid any potential duplication with other sending districts of those programs, so they were looking at that. And they're talking about, I brought up and continue to advocate for electricity, plumbing, and cosmetology. Because those are three areas that the SST does not offer that I feel that they should. So, um, I'm sorry, electric, electricity, plumbing, HVAC, and cosmetology. Cosmetology are all areas in the, it looks like some of the rules might change for the building trades. So that electricity could be a component of the building trades, which is an easier path to adding a program. And also, if you think about it, hiring an electrician to teach a program is pretty tricky because the amount of money that they make as an electrician is so much more than what you'd make running a school program. It's really challenging. It's like finding a nursing teacher. Or a school nurse even, can be tricky. So that's, it was a good meeting and they continue to work on their enrollments and figuring out how to get the right number of students in the right seats in the program and keeping them in for the two years. A lot of kids will go for a year and then say, okay, you know, I did it, but I don't wanna do it for the second year and we're trying to improve retention, which is important for any kind of program. It's a big commitment to spend two years of high school in a program and they're doing a really good job. They have a new director there and she's doing a really good job trying to recruit and retain students.
That's two years in addition to your classwork here.
Well, it's in, it's in the school day at the same time, so, so you'd spend half your school day for two years there.
Any other committees? Jake?
Students of the life skills program under the direct supervision of Ms. Ali, our ELO coordinator, have begun a partnership with the Plastol YMCA. Students are building skills and independence in the local community. The high school officially ruled out the remote academic support program for its two hundred and twenty-eight remote students, which is thirty-eight percent of the high school on January eleventh. Uh, the three teacher team is working every period each day to support remote students in every content area at Samhorn Regional High School. Through remote advisory and one-on-one academic support, parent communication, and organized tracking system, the team is pleased to report a positive start. Student council recently had a high school admin appreciation day where we delivered coffee, treats, and letters of gratitude to our high school admin. And we're going to do one for the janitorial staff next week.
So new business, we have a public hearing to approve donations.
Did I have to be right at six-thirty now?
So.
All right, we've got a policy to read. John, do you wanna, wanna through that? JLCA?
Yes, sorry, I just had to get through the six thousand folders. It's buried in there. So I saw Mr. Dawson at one point. I don't know where he is now. Ah, there he is. So he brought this policy, JLCA, to us. The only thing he's asking us to make a change to is the wording on how often the physical has to be to keep it current. It's very challenging for families to do what was before. It was once at least every school year, but then you run into the issue of insurance and they can't be closer together than three hundred and sixty-five days, so Mr. Dawson recommended this new wording, which is more recent than thirteen months prior to the current date. It allows for a little bit of leeway so parents can make scheduling work along with their insurance requirements that they have to meet. So we discussed this in the policy committee and we all agreed that this made sense. And you would all feel the same way.
So is the situation with insurance where they'll only cover an exam once a year?
Once every three hundred and six, you have to go three hundred and sixty-five days plus one day.
For the next one.
So it keeps pushing out the date and then you add in if there is a weekend or a holiday or scheduling conflict with the family itself. So by giving them that extra month.
Gives them some leeway.
Exactly. So it allows everybody to stay in compliance a little bit easier. This is for student athletes, yeah, yep.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Jamie?
So am, am I understanding that here right that this only applies to student athletes?
This is, this, it says, "Prior to participation on a school athletic team, students must provide written documentation that they have passed a physical. Such, such exam must be," and then he'd like to add in, "more recent than thirteen months prior to the current date." Instead of "such exam must be completed at least once every school year."
Yeah, and that, that part's fine with me. I'm just trying to understand if it's all students or just student athletes. And you're telling me it's just athletes, okay. Cause I was gonna ask, why do we do this? But okay, student athletics, now I get it. I'm good.
Okay, roll call vote. Larry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Pete? John?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes for me.
We need to motion the second read then.
Okay. Motion for a second read. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote on the second read. Larry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Pete? John?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Myself is yes.
Bob's very happy now.
Bob's been working hard to manage all these physicals tighter than they've ever been. It's really good.
Bob, do you wanna do your update now?
Have this document today, I hope. Um, just to give you an update of where we are with our athletics and COVID cases and such. Over the last fourteen days or so, basically the two weeks, seventh to today. Number sixteen to the sixth, we had fifteen cases at the high school. Eight of them were athletes. Seventh to the twentieth, we've only had two, so that's fifteen down to two. Athletes testing positive down to one. Middle school level, we had five cases, four of them athletes in that prior period, and now we're down to none. They haven't had any cases of the middle school. Kind of decline, I think, that we were looking for. Talk about this. And the question really is, do you, I was gonna say we, but really you guys in person learning and not learn remotely. Bracing significant benefits to, one team in particular, our middle school girls. You know, the four players, one of whom couldn't play for another reason. Our season's been put on hold. We'll get them back. That's a pretty limited numbers. Baby boys today play. They won buzzer beater, that was kinda cool, but I've also gotten some very, very heartfelt emails from some parents. My kid needs to be in school, my kid needs to play basketball. Those were a little easier to ignore, but sort of, you know, deal with mentally or emotionally. A little bit harder now with the much, much lower numbers we're seeing. My recommendation that we allow the kids person and also in this state. I do know one thing in particular, at least for several of our varsity teams, you're gonna see a significant choose to stay remote. Had a bit of a scare this week that the kids are aware of, just because they know, you know. Had a pretty big impact on one of our teams. If they had been in school. That woke us up. Jamie, how was that for you with the earmuffs on?
Yes, yes ma'am. No, we're, we're having a hard time hearing Bob.
He can't hear, he's can't hear him at all half the time.
Yeah.
He can't hear Bob. I think that's why they were trying to fix the microphone. Talk a lot, so I can go again. Jamie, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay. I could just hear Bob, right? So Bob went in and out. I got the, the fifteen high school going to two to one. Uh, and middle school, five to four, going to none. And then something happened that he was concerned with and we missed what all that was. And you're not picking up any of this, it sounds like.
Bob, do you wanna just sit at the table and join the party, sort of speak?
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear you fine, Tom.
We're fun over here.
It always makes me think of Finding Nemo when you get to finally touch the butt. Sit at the table, I'm with the cool kids. Oh, it would be, I'm gonna push this away a little bit. So it'd be my recommendation that we let the kids come back and learn in person, because the numbers that we were looking for, and shouldn't be, I mean, the we and the railway, is what we've seen. We've seen a significant decline in the numbers across the board. We could be back in the same situation forty-eight hours from now, who knows? But right now, that would be my recommendation, because I think it's the benefit of the kids being able to play and learn in person if they so choose, to me outweighs the risks that we're dealing with right now, so. That's my recommendation based on the numbers that we're seeing.
I'll make a, a motion that student athletes can return to in-person learning.
I second.
In-person or remote, but they need to make a choice and stick to it.
It's their choice.
Yeah, and go back and forth. Yeah.
That choice, it's their choice, return to in-person learning. Either or, either remote or in-person learning.
As, as they desire.
But, but once you decide, you have to stay in person, because we've had some kids try to flip-flop and we can't do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could you say? Okay. Any more discussion?
Bob, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Um, I know, obviously, we saw the numbers. Can I just ask what the percentages are of students that chose to go remote?
Um, let's see, I did the, I ran that early and sent it out. So initially, we had about ninety-five percent of our varsity athletes chose whatever option allowed them to learn in person. Some of them with IEPs, and we also had students where they were, um, they had previously had COVID and because of the, the new state guidance, they were able to come back. And they're, they're actually kind of exempt from quarantining again too, which is bad. They had COVID, who knows what that's gonna do with them long-term. The good news is if it comes up again, they're gonna be okay. But about ninety-five percent of our varsity kids took the option of playing and learning remotely or coming into school if they could. And about sixty, fifty-five to sixty percent of our sub-varsity athletes chose to stay in person and opt out of their teams temporarily. So I think we'll see a lot of kids coming back as soon as tomorrow, um, if they have that option to play. So we'll push that out tomorrow morning if that's the way you go. I, I think the most important thing is that again, we've been, we've done a great job as a district being prudent and careful. We started out the school year remote. We observed what other school districts did, how things went, and then we went back in person and we've been relatively successful. We are one of the only districts that have all, all students who wanna be in person in school five days. Many other districts have cohorts, which is half their kids in school for two days a week. So there's a huge difference between what we're doing for in-person learning and what other people around us are. Just wanna kinda point that out. So what that means is that there's more kids together in our buildings than in other districts. So when you have to quarantine, more people have to quarantine. It's fine. It's, we're doing the right thing. I feel really good about it. Um, partly because, so we did this cautiously. We had a situation right before the holiday break or during the holiday break. We made a decision to be careful. And Mr. Dawson has not seen any evidence of transmission of COVID at athletics at this time. Fair enough? So what I, what I'm asking Mr. Dawson to say is if we allow students' choice right now, should we start to see evidence of transmission at sports? We'll have to come back to the board and discuss again. But we're not seeing it at this, I just wanna be very clear for the kids that we, it's all about the kids. We want them to learn and be able to do their sports, and I continue to assert to some of our particularly varsity athletes that if you choose to come to school in person, which we love to have you here and that's perfectly fine. But if you do, remember, if you have to quarantine for school, you're gonna miss two weeks of sports. Just be careful when you make that decision to think about the reverse impact. Because we want you to have a wonderful season. That's the real goal here, because you only get one season as a senior varsity athlete. And so enjoy your season. If you need to be remote so that you don't miss anything, we, we, we understand that and we'll help you get through that period. It's only like six more weeks. Right? So we'll, we'll do what we can to help you. So just think carefully before you make your decision. I, I know none of the kids are watching. Why am I still talking? They're all playing right now. I'm trying. Bob can convey this to the kids. I'm watching the game. All right, anyway, I'll stop. All right, thanks.
Any other, just, Jamie?
Yeah, Bob, just because I missed part of what you said, did you say some subsection of our teams are missing the season or something? Something like that happen or does that just?
Hold on a second.
All right, they're playing with the volume, Jamie, hang on.
Hang on just one second, Jamie. Jamie, can you talk?
Oh, can I talk?
That was a bad, you got me back for earlier.
So, Bob, I, I thought I heard you saying before when you were on the podium, when you were cutting in and out, that some subset of our teams has, the, uh, season's forfeit or something. Could you expand on that? I, I missed it. And I might have misheard it. I, I don't know. And
Hang on.
Not you, Jamie.
It's not you, it's the system.
Adjustments are being made. Volume adjustments.
I never hear it's not me, ever. Testing, one, two, three.
I hear you fine.
Yeah, I can hear you when you talk too, Larry.
I knew there was a way to silence him.
Now, if you can bottle and sell that. Now, can you hear it all? No? Hello, hello, hello? Peter Piper picked a peck of pickled peppers? Perhaps?
If you want, I can join the Zoom call and just put Jamie on my computer speakers.
Yeah, I can, I can just call in and ask the question, then you guys can ask it.
Jamie, I did not plan this, I swear.
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard that.
Oh, God, no.
Alright, so I, I'm trying to find out, Bob had mentioned something from the podium about what I thought I heard was part of a season being canceled or forfeited. And I'm wondering what that was, because we did not hear it, or maybe I heard it wrong.
Hold on just a second, Jamie.
You were at the beginning and the end of what you said, but not the middle, not the question part.
Are you asking about the numbers?
No, what, what, you had made a comment when you were on the podium. And it sounded like some part of our, our sports teams had forfeited the season.
I can help, help out.
It's not working. I'll just follow up with Bob direct.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I just wanted to clarify, so Jamie originally, I believe, was the one that made the motion at the last meeting to review every two weeks. Will we still continue to do that?
Yeah, we can certainly have a check-in from athletics every two weeks. Yeah. Yeah. But, but
That was part of the original motion, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
That's what you wanted, Jamie?
No, but it's still good.
Okay, he's, he's, yeah, we, we're gonna check in on reopening every two weeks anyway right now, because we're right in the thick of it with the winter months. Right, and, and everything that's going on, but I'll just move all the Tuesday basketball games to Wednesday and
Are you all set, Jamie?
Attempted, but I won't do that. No, he's still Can you guys send me the Zoom link? Oh, thanks. All right, so I'll get Jamie on here. Hold on just one second. I'm in the waiting room, guys. Thank you. Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, I sent it into chat too. I'm just trying to find out what Bob said about, I thought he said something about a team had to forfeit, but with me and Larry could not hear that. And I don't know if I heard it right or not. One of our teams from, from COVID concerns.
No, what happened was the middle school games couldn't run.
Oh, okay. That's all I was trying to find out. I, I've heard something about forfeit and I didn't know the cause and I just wanted to know That's all I was trying to find out. I, I, I've heard something about forfeit, and I didn't know the cause, and I just wanted to know who got impacted.
The kids will be, uh, in person, so they'll be able to participate, and they'll be able to run the program.
All right, thank you. Sorry for the delay.
Well, it's my fault, but we're working on it over here.
Okay, so. Ready to move the boat? Switch it up a little, Tammy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Jamie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes, for myself. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Bob.
Can you two, can you two give me the thumbs up? Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Larry, all right, so two things, this will be, well, it'll be relatively brief.
Just about the donations?
Oh, we all, oh, we gotta stop. I'm sorry, okay, we'll go back to that. I apologize, I forgot, we had to stop for the donations.
Good catch there.
Okay, so the, the first one is, is a Department of Education grant for $265,400. This is the first portion of the COVID preparedness grant. At, at the last meeting, we had a public hearing for the 309,000. What we had to do is get up over that threshold of, of proving expenditures for the first 264,000 in order to get the 309. Uh, we never had the public hearing for the, the first half, and what this is, is just $200 per student for any, um, any, uh, sending district, okay? Um, and it was doled out that way to every district in the state, okay?
So, will Fremont also get money that?
Yes, so, um, if there's any Fremont High School students, Fremont is getting, is receiving that money, okay? Tom and I are in discussions with the superintendent at Fremont Schools about their participating in, in sending money our way towards this grant, okay? Um, and it all, all words said to us, um, point in the direction that they are going to participate.
Simply need to invoice them for the money. That's what the state told them needed. They need an invoice for this.
All right, so, uh, motion to accept the grant? For?
Second.
265,000?
$400.
All right.
265,400.
Yep. Um, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Just for myself.
The second one is for a donation for $5,000 for needy students. And it's to be dispersed at the discretion of the superintendent.
I'll just say that, uh, very, very grateful to receive a second donation of $5,000 this year from this department. I think it's the department to figure out how to do this because obviously this year is the most. Tom, I can't hear you. Talked about buying jackets for kids that need jackets or hats and mittens because I felt like those are things that kids. So we've also talked about other assistance for some students at the upper levels, because some of them don't need those things. And we're still having those discussions, but I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Blesser.
Motion to accept the $5,000 grant from the Blesser's?
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Can you hear me? No, never mind then, I was just gonna say thank you.
Nope, we got it, you're on, we can hear you.
I was just gonna say thank you, we, it's greatly appreciated, and though I didn't hear anything Tom said, I wanted to say thank you.
All right, um, roll call vote, starting with Larry?
Yes.
Sorry, Larry, I didn't have your volume up. There you go, the thumbs up helps.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes for me. You have another one?
Yeah, this one is not requiring a public hearing, however, and I just wanna make sure that, that the record shows that there's no public here to, to, to speak during the public hearing. So, um, so basically, this is a $1,500 donation to the Binky School for, um, uh, nursing supplies.
Did the person not want to be?
Um, no, it's just the, New Hampshire Charitable Foundation is a large organization in New Hampshire that is, um, it's almost like a state-run pool where they, they manage lots of different types of trusts, okay? And what they do is they, they call through a lot of applications, and then they dole out money from those trusts to, to benefit those organizations. And so our nurse, um, applied for some funds and she received $1,500.
That's the organization that Mr. Tomell went to work for. That's where he is.
So, uh, motion to approve the $1,500 donation?
Oh.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Larry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
John?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes for me. Done the policy. Done the reorganization.
Um, there is a reopening plan. There are a couple more quick items.
Oh, okay.
We had to pause for the, um, Larry, you can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, just wanted to point out to everyone that the, in September, the governor put out a uh, some guidance called Consideration for Transitioning Between School Instructional Models. Really fancy way of saying, are you going to be in remote or in person? Three criteria. Criteria one is community-wide transmission, which was defined by 100,000 people. Well, if you have 100, i- i- it basically makes it by county. Super hard to track in your local community, and the COVID dashboard at the state level is way behind because DHS is overrun with the number of cases. We have cases that we submitted a month and a half ago that still aren't showing up yet on the DHS website, and we have sent them all the information. I'm, I can't even imagine what it's like for them. I'm not, this is not a criticism. They are doing everything they can to handle the information and the load. Second criteria is school-wide transmission. Are we catching it from one another? The third criteria is, um, the, the staffing. Do you have enough staffing to run a school? So really, I probably should have said it the other way around because the real criteria that's been a problem for us, which I said last July, I was concerned about is the number of people quarantining, not the number of cases, and that's exactly what's happening. Okay, so, having said that, if you, if you flip this to this document, um, they updated this document, which I had sent all of, to, to all of you today. It's on the DOE website, it's easy to find. But basically, what they're saying is that, I just wanted to read the statement out loud so that the board knew it and the public heard it. They're basically saying that using the criteria for community-wide transmission is not as important as the other two. Do you have school-wide transmission and do you have, uh, um, staffing? Because the community transmission doesn't affect the schools as much as it does the local businesses in the community, right? But the, the schools, if it's not transmitting from student to student, which frankly, it's not. I mean, we had a case at central office last week and not a single person caught it. It means that social distancing, hand washing, wearing masks, following protocols. This week, we're doing more meetings on Zoom, not because we're worried that we're gonna have transmission, but because we don't wanna trigger another quarantine. Right? So it's more about just trying to not make people stuck in the house for 10 days unnecessarily because the protocols seem to be working, so I'm very optimistic about what we're doing in the schools to keep people safe. I wanna be clear about that, that you all know that, that I'm a very cautious person when it comes to safety, and we worked really hard as a team to be careful this fall, and it has paid off, but the protocols are working. So the, the gist of this document is just that, I'll just read this short paragraph for the record to the public in the community so that they understand why we're not closing the schools when our community transmission rate has gone above the threshold. So it says, "In some circumstances, school may take a less restrictive approach than what is suggested in the table above. For example, if a school is operating with a full in-person instructional, instructional model and able to manage with low school impact despite a substantial level of community transmission, then schools can very reasonably hold course and continue with instruction, with in-person instruction if resources allow." So I just wanted to share that with everyone, that that's now a part of this document, and that's a really important piece of the document that we were waiting for guidance on. So I just, that's, that's good news for us that we're doing the right thing. Um, the, the last piece was just that I, at some point in the, it doesn't, we don't have to make this decision this evening, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we're kind of seeing a trend of we seem to be open for roughly two and a half, three weeks before we start having enough cases that we need to start asking schools to go remote. So if you have a, a month of school, at the end of the second week, we start to have some, some cases and it starts to get strained. And then at the end of the third week, it gets really quite strained, and then we, we needed, like, before Christmas, we needed to close for a week, right before the Christmas break, before holiday break.
When you say strained, you're talking about staff, not.
Thank you. It's not students, it's the staffing due to quarantines, not transmission. Very important. So what's happening is we're having just enough cases to cause a number of people to have to quarantine. So this week, the Binky School is very strained. Um, they had a, a, a couple of cases on Friday, and the high school is doing okay. They had one on Monday during the holiday that came in, and they contact traced it, and they're, they're okay, but normally, the high school sends subs to help other schools because they're the biggest building, but they can't right now. Their, their, their staff is low, right? They're, they're covering what they can. What I'm getting at is that we need to have, I need you all to know, and the public to know, that we are watching the numbers closely, and we can't, we don't have a crystal ball, and we will continue to follow the plan that was adopted two weeks ago where we will move from, you know, we'll make the high school remote first, the middle school remote second, Memorial, and then Binky last, because we recognize that our youngest learners need to be in school with their teachers as much as possible. There's no hidden message here. We, right now, we're open. What the next few weeks will hold is hard to tell. We'll, we'll take it as it comes. Question for the board is, do we want to be remote the week after February vacation? A couple of options. We could talk about that now, or we could wait and talk about it in two weeks, once we kind of see where our numbers are at that point and whether or not we've been in school. But I just want you to know that if we had not been remote over the, the winter break, over the, the holiday break, we would have been, we would have been remote a week or two later. We had a lot of cases come in right after the holiday break. Right? We had a lot of kids or parents or, or staff members have to quarantine. People mix when they're on breaks, and things can kind of, um, get a little, little hectic with that. My recommendation is that we consider it at some point being remote for the week after February break because people are going to travel, they are going to do things. But we might wanna give it a couple more weeks before we make that decision, just to kind of see what's happening, you know? Prudence has been really, we've done a good job with that. I don't like to jump to anything, but I just want it to be out there and on the table that we need to talk about. So at that, I'll turn that over to you all to decide, do you wanna discuss that this evening? Or do you wanna discuss it in two more weeks before the deliberative at the shorter, you know, we have that board meeting before the the deliberative, we could cover it that night. I think if we go out to the next Wednesday, we're getting a little bit tight on coverage for families. You know, they, they do need some time to plan. Those are my thoughts.
I just wanna tie in with this, is that I happen to be the health officer in Kingston. I'm gonna give you a website to go to, and it's called nh.gov.vaccines.
Yes.
Some of you may know about it, but if you go on there, it'll tell you about 1B. We already know what 1A is, that's where all this, uh, first responders, medical people, and this is where you could go, and it's a very easy prompt. It'll let you know about how you can get vaccinated. We're gonna start with 65 and above first, but I don't wanna get into nitty-gritty about it because it's gonna tie in with what I'm gonna say as far as the school goes. Um, as far as right now, if you were asking right now to vote on instead of to listen out, I'd say it's better to be safe than sorry. Because if you come in with a couple of COVID people or students or whatever, we're gonna end up having you shut down for 10 days instead of a week. Um, so it might be better to say, it's an insurance, it's a gamble, but better to be safe than sorry, anyway, so much for metaphors. Um, but hopefully, we will know a little bit more. Um, you can't even begin to look at until the 22nd, and then the shots are gonna start on the 26th, but go to that, that site. Um, so I would say we have a little bit of time, is what I'm saying. Um, because the vaccines are gonna start going out, I believe it's the 26th. Um, I don't have it in front of me, so my memory here. Um, and it's gonna start with us old folks first. But it does kind of tie in with our decision-making.
You old folks.
It's over 65, Jim. So, you know, Dawn will be first, obviously.
I will be the first one in line. I'm the oldest one here.
Well, maturity, why? She's still a maturement song. But it's not like.
I don't believe it includes educators, though.
Comments on this? Jamie?
Can you hear me?
I'm turning it up, hang on a second. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
You, you can read it also, Tom. I sent it in chat.
We can hear you.
Um, he, hold on, I'll read it. He would like us to wait. We have, um, lost 37 days to remote. I don't wanna add more unless we have no choice. So we should delay this until a later date.
Go on.
Yeah, I also would agree. Um, I think waiting until our next board meeting, I believe that is the 3rd of February. Um, and if my memory serves me correctly, the first day back after February vacation would be March 1st. So if we make a decision that day, it gives families a month to plan. So I think that still gives enough time if we wait, because who knows what will happen? Numbers could change dramatically in a couple weeks. Um, so I think it makes sense to, to hold off for now.
Another comments? I, when you do the, um, in a couple of weeks, I'd like some, some data on the staffing situation, by some rule.
Yep.
Okay.
But, but remember that, that, that it, it doesn't, what's going on in two weeks will have nothing to do with what's happening after February break. You know, I'm happy to share that data because it's important. I'm more worried about, well, I'm always worried about week to week. You know, if we have four or five cases, it can put a lot of people, I mean, right before the holiday break, we had 150 people at one point quarantined. So I'm, I'm more nervous about, um, people coming back from February break, having visited with other people or traveled, not quarantining appropriately and going to school and infecting even more people. That's, I can't give you any data that would help support that decision.
I understand, but I think it would be good for the board and the community to have a snapshot at that particular time.
Sure. Well, just remember, on our website, every day, a snapshot is posted.
Okay.
So you can just go look at it today for everything. Yeah, it's all on there, but we'll do an update publicly at the board meeting just to support the process.
All right. Where, where on the website is that?
Uh, it's right underneath the school information. It's, uh, one of the first tabs, COVID. If you can't find it, let me know, I'll shoot it right out to you, but I want you to look because I wanna see if it's easy to find.
For anybody who's watching.
Yeah, yeah, it's right on the district website. For those of you at home, uh, there's a, an easy link on the main page, and if you have any difficulty finding it, please just contact Phyllis Kennedy at the central office. Phyllis, it's right on the upper left-hand side of the website, right? Under the quick links. Yeah, COVID dashboard under the quick links.
Daily COVID rates, and it's under the quick links, and if you click on it, it lists out every single day, going from the most recent all the way back to November 2nd of last year.
Right.
Jim?
Yeah.
Just, I wanna make sure that vaccine, floral, not vaccine, if you're looking for a vaccine, you won't be able to get, but it's floral vaccine. And I talked to the town administrator assistant today, and she said she would put it on the town website, so if you can't find it, there, go on our website, in case I gave you the wrong, the wrong address.
Yeah, I actually went and took it.
I just went to it as well.
Just do it, yeah. I mean, it's, it's an easy prompt, I mean, it's.
Really easy.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm March to May, is what it's saying.
Thank you. So, um, anything else on it, on this, uh, subject? No?
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, school board communications with public regarding that article.
Thank you. Um, the, the, um, the public relations committee met the other day, and we were kind of discussing, I shared with them, um, two important documents that will be part of our annual report. One was the superintendent's letter, and the other was a special letter that, that Dr. Haynes drafted regarding COVID-19. And, uh, just kind of framing up the, the town report. It's such a unique year, and I really feel like the town report is an important part of our history that may be read 200 years from now, that it needs to be really accurate and portray kind of what's gone on in the district for the year. I don't know why, I just kind of, I, I've read. I don't know why I just kind of, I, I've read some hundred and twenty-year-old town reports and I find them fascinating because. Schools face the exact same issues a hundred and twenty years ago as they do today. Budgets, enrollment, staffing. It's amazing. And academic performance. Um, so I think that the, the, the real question is, um. Would the board like the public relations committee to. Draft any letters in support of the teachers' contracts or the warrant articles, or is there anything that you want to come from the whole board? Through the public relations committee? We discussed it and decided to just put it on the agenda and have you tell us what to do. Did I get all that, Tammy? Did I? Yeah, okay. So that's it. What do you, what would, what's your, what would you like us to do?
I think more information is better. I would say pull another out and put one in the carriage town. Put it on our website. You have much information with many people do that.
Right? And would that be, the question is. I, I think that the public relations committee would like to draft a letter for the school board.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Saying, um, you know, this is, this is. These are the facts, I guess. Is that, is that a good way to put it, Tammy? Like these are, this is what. We're doing, this is, we were asking that you support these things and. Certainly I can ask Jim O'Shaughnessy to comment to make sure we're not electioneering. Right? Just to make sure that we don't cross any lines, but. I do, I do think it's important for the teachers to see. The board actively supporting the contract that they agreed to.
Well, this is in addition to us voting in favor of it.
Right.
Jamie?
Can you hear me? All right, go ahead. I'll, I'll type.
Okay. Anyone else?
Other comment?
The reason that, the reason that we're asking is the last couple of years, the board has. Has asked the personnel committee of the public relations committee to refrain from speaking for the board. In print, in letters to the carriage town made, we were asked specifically not to do that. We were asked, you know. To write individual letters, but not letters on behalf of the board or be a voice for the board. So. That is something that the board needs to instruct the committee, the subcommittee.
I think the wording, I mean, we could, you can always make it as a news article on such and such a day, the boards. Voted to, you know. Nitty gritty with you, but I think if, if it's a, an information dissemination. Of what we did. Um, that's quite appropriate because it's a public matter of public record. And. Going to run it by our attorney anyway, but, you know. Obviously we support it. We voted for it. So I, I think you've got a little bit of latitude as far as electioneering and stating. What we have done and some of the arguments we made here, you know, it was mentioned by. School board, a school board member that this is a good thing for the community, you know, so you're really reporting on. What we said here, which takes you out of the electioneering thing, because you're reporting facts. It's out there anyway already. So, you know, I, 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 I don't think there's going to be a problem with the board doing it.
I'd like to hear what the attorney has to say.
Yeah. Well, what, what would happen? So Jamie, can I read Jamie's comment? Yeah. Jamie said, I would think that the board. Is able to publicly and politically support any article and warrant. There's no restriction on the board doing this as far as I'm aware. It's the school admin that is restricted, restricted. Furthermore, I don't think it's possible for a board member to be restricted in their speech and support. So Jamie's, let me just help Jamie, you're right. Except for there are two exceptions. One is you, you as a board member can write anything you want to the newspaper as a citizen. Right? That's your, you're right. Um. I have more latitude to speak in support of warrant articles as the superintendent. The superintendent has specific. Ability to support warrant articles that other employees do not have. Uh, and, and it's, I, I don't do it without checking with an attorney because it's gray and it's kind of weird that I can do that, but I. You know, I can, I can say, you know, like, like I, when I sent out that video the other week, at the end, I said. Something about supporting the teachers' contracts. Jim O'Shaughnessy gave me the exact verbiage for that and it was very specific. It wasn't. What I said the first round, he said, no. He said, you're close, but just, you'll probably be fine, but don't play with it. You know what I mean? Because it's, it's gray. I mean, it really just ends up, we end up in litigation and we end up like, it's more of a lawsuit issue than it is a losing issue. Too expensive to bother with something if somebody wants to fight it. So, so then the, 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 the second piece is, um. Um. I think that what Jim, what we would do is Tammy, Larry and I. Um, would work on a document and then Jim would read it and say, yeah, that's okay. He wouldn't tell us what to write, Jim. Does that make sense? So, so yeah, I mean, whatever we write, I was thinking what Pete was thinking, which is that we say, you know. Dear community, on X night, the school board voted six to zero to support the. Sanborn Regional School District Teachers Contract with X, Y, and Z. And, uh, on, on that same night, they voted. To support the administrators' contract, six to zero. We could also talk about the budget. Right? So we could just be, it could be like a factual news report without a lot of opinion in there, but. But I'll get from Jim O'Shaughnessy the language about, we hope that you'll support these important initiatives for our community or whatever. In a manner that he feels isn't electioneering.
To avoid a long debate and discussion. I would suggest that whatever the, um, publicity committee comes up with, you send it to the whole board. Before you send it to Jim.
Yeah, so you can read it.
Right.
That's fine. We can do that as a process as long as. What we'll do is I'll email it to the board and you can give me some feedback and then we'll have a meeting to discuss that. So it's public. I don't want to have any kind of like a, I just want to make sure that there's no. Uh, we do a great job of transparency. I want that to continue. And we could probably.
You don't want to be sending multiple lawyers, letters to Jim, but.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we'll send in a final blessed draft. Yep. Good. So can we just have a vote to tell the public relations committee to draw up a, a statement for the board?
Any more discussion on this?
Don't move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of the publicity co, uh, committee dr, drafting up, uh? The, uh, described information? Larry?
Chairman of the board, yes.
Wait, oh, Larry's talking. Hold on. Larry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Larry. Yes, Larry said yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
He's got his little thumbs up, he had up in there.
Yep.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we just have all of them anyway.
Uh, thank you.
New warrant articles. Thank you.
All right, so we have two new warrant articles and we were in the, the prescribed timeline to introduce new warrant articles. Neither of these deal with money. All they do is, is just ask for a special meeting should the collective bargaining agreement warrant article fail. Okay? And so I'm just going to read them out and what I need the school board to do is to vote on them, um, in favor or opposed. And then after this, I'm going to type in the, the vote. I'm going to print it out and we're going to sign the warrant tonight.
But do we, is it a two-part thing where we have to vote to add them and then a vote to approve them?
Recommend them?
Yeah. I would, I would prefer it that way.
Can I say one thing before we do this? Yes, yeah, um. This was a, a, in some ways. It's important to note that anytime we've put a collective bargaining agreement on a warrant since I've been here. We have had the additional warrant article of allowing for a one-time special meeting. There's an oversight that they weren't put on the warrant. This isn't new or different. It's just keeping things consistent with what we've done. In the past. In my experience and Pete, it's always been that way since you've been around, right? So it, it's really important for our staff, um, that they feel that, that we support this. So I appreciate you taking the time to talk about it.
Okay. So, uh, motion to recommend. Article five.
Place it first. Place it on the warrant first.
Do it every collective bargain at the time, but I'm just want to make sure that we do it.
I call these the do-over.
Yeah. All right, so this is going to be article five. It's special meeting, professional staff collective bargaining agreement. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District, if Article Four is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting. At its option to address Article Four cost items only.
So this is going to. Require all the other articles being renumbered, right?
That's right. So, um, the next CBA is now going to become six and then there's also going to be a professional. Uh, I'm sorry, special meeting that's going to become number seven and then the, um, the two. Uh, capital reserve funds are going to be eight and nine.
So our previous votes aren't based on a number, they're based on the warrant article.
Yeah, so we, what we did is we just moved all the previous votes down.
Just, just, I, I'm sure we're okay, but I ran into this a number of years ago. We're okay with the ten percent?
Yeah, this does, these are not dollar amounts.
Right, no, no, I understand that, but. We ran into a problem with DRA every years ago because when. You go over the ten percent. They tried to dictate us. We were able to get around it. Tried to, the last warrant article comes off. Then the next warrant article comes off until you hit the ten percent.
Oh.
That's why I wanted to make sure that because those last two, they do have dollar amounts.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure we were in the ten percent because they would try to get us. When they have a couple warrant articles, they start with the last one and they go to the next one. And so we, we, when I say we won. We presented a good argument. They said, okay. Because we ran into it in the town when I was in the board.
Yes.
We ran into a problem there. So, um, I just, I just want to make sure we're okay.
Yeah.
You know?
We did run this by an attorney.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I wanted to make sure, I, I, I knew we were. But it's one of those things, I know we are, but I need somebody to say, yes, you're right.
All right, we okay?
Yeah, the, the ten percent rule is, is how much the budget can increase at the deliberative session.
Right, but it's got to do with the warrant.
It's the amount. Yeah.
You know what I mean?
It's a calculated number that's on the MS twenty-seven that I presented to the board at the last meeting. Adding these two articles is not going to change any of those articles. I mean.
No, I, I was just concerned. Okay, never mind. I'm happy.
Okay, so motion to recommend.
Place it first. We have to, we have to vote to place it on the warrant first.
Oh, yes, place, okay. Motion to place.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Um, roll call vote or any discussion, any other? Jamie?
Hold on, I gotta turn him up.
Can you hear me? Okay, I typed it in also. If you can hear me, I, I believe there's risk to these agreements passing. It's been a difficult. Time for the community. Uh, and there's risk to these agreements passing. Generally speaking. I don't support this type of, of language because presumably whenever those dollars were negotiated, it goes into the agreements. The risk that they fail was part of the negotiations. Given the extreme circumstances this time around with COVID. Uh, and, and the uncertainties evolve, I, I support this. I, I think this should be on the ballot and I would recommend that it goes on the ballot.
Thank you, Jamie.
I, I concur with that, um. If, if. A group can, can count on a do-over every year. Then there's a, a disincentive to. To, there could be a disincentive to. Try to. For them to try to maybe get more than, than they think is, is appropriate. And then if it fails, they have another chance to renegotiate.
I can.
Yeah.
Um, I've been twenty-some-odd years in our government. Am I correct, Matt, that this has to go to a judge?
What, if it fails?
Fails. Only a judge can call a separate special meeting. We have.
Yeah, or you can probably get the legislature to do a special act.
But in my twenty-plus years, I've never heard many judges in the state allowing that. I would say that's a pretty accurate statement.
Yes, it would, it's very onerous.
Right. So, so I, I, I just want to alleviate any concerns you have because I see what you're saying, but the chances. Well, let's put it this way, I've never seen it and I'm not curious on that.
So what you're saying is this, this warrant has never been utilized?
What happens if you need to have because of the, you, you need to, to. Put it. Need to go and have a special election. You have to go to the courts. Or the legislature and they approve. Whether you can have the special election. Have you ever seen it, Matt?
No.
I, I've never seen it, you know, and I've seen people go and try to do it.
Yes.
But the courts have said no. So I just want to alleviate your concern because I, I hear what you're saying.
Well, it's a very high.
And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to say, hey, union, guess what, you know? Well, what I am saying is you brought up a legitimate concern. Um, but I, I'm not. I share your concern a little bit, but I'm not.
It's a very high bar you have to.
Very high bar.
Okay. I'm, okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Um, anything else? Okay, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes, for myself.
Hey. Now they need a vote to recommend.
Okay, so vote to recommend. I'll move the, I'll move that motion. Second?
Double.
Do we need a, do we need a second?
Any discussion on recommending?
We just vote to recommend, don't we?
Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Pete? Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Larry, can you give us a thumbs up just because I couldn't hear you? Thank you. That's helpful.
All right, uh, article seven.
All right, so article seven is special meeting administrators collective bargaining agreement. Shall the Sanborn Regional School District, if Article Six is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting. At its option to address Article Six cost items only. This is the identical issue as the past, last one.
We have to place it on the ballot, on the warrant?
Second. Any discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Pete?
Yep.
Okay, Jamie, Larry?
Yes.
Yes, for myself. Vote to, uh, recommend.
Don't move. Sorry.
Second.
Okay. Um. Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Tammy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Pete? Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
All right.
Ready.
Yes.
Yes, for me.
Hey, so I'm going to go and print this out and I'm going to have it available to you to sign in a few minutes.
Great.
Thank you.
Can we keep going? Do you have to sign it in meeting?
Um, it's actually an agenda item, but.
You have to wait until you, okay.
Oh, is it the next agenda item?
Just, Jamie has a question.
Meeting.
How do Larry and I sign?
Oh, yeah, how do Larry and Jamie, Jamie sign?
They can come to the, um, SAU office and sign it at your leisure. We also have to have the budget committee come and sign as well.
Deadline?
Deadline.
Deadline. Um, don't worry, Jamie, if you have to, we'll bring it to your house.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we need it by Friday. We need it by Friday, so we'll run over and get you to sign it socially distanced.
Yeah, something like that, yep.
Got it, man. We'll get it. If I have to, I'll come over.
Second public comment. Uh. The next meeting agenda, if anybody from the board has anything they want on the agenda, please get it in, uh, by the. Thursday before January.
February third is the next.
February, February third, that's our next meeting. Uh, the filing period for positions of the Sanborn Regional School Board. The Sanborn Regional Budget Committee and the District Moderator will be on Wednesday, January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. And, and on Friday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one at five P M. The candidate filing forms may be obtained at the SAU office from eight A M. to four P M. Located at the Christie Building at fifty-one Church Street in Kingston. The school district clerk will be available on the last day to file until five P M. Next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be on Wednesday, February third at five thirty P M. In the library at the Sanborn Regional School, High School, followed by the first deliberative session. Of the annual school district meeting at seven P M. in the auditorium. The snow date is Thursday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The second voting session of the annual school district meeting will be held. On Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one. From eight A M. to eight P M. in the Swayze Gymnasium. Seminary campus for Kingston voters and then Newton Town Hall for, for Newton voters. Have a non-public? Have a non-public? No, none on public. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Take a motion review.
No, move to adjourn.